Right. My allegiance to the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
We're going through the minutes of October 20th.
Should I hold on these if I was here or should I abstain?
Your question. Okay, second. I'll say. Uh, in a second, I need further discussion. See now, okay. Members' reports, Charlotte, so with you.
Yeah, I am kind of curious though about what you were saying about minority left on the side of the road.
Uh, yeah, we're, uh, prior to the meeting starting, we're talking about the, uh, right, we're on the side of the road that we're occurring right now. Uh, I don't know, but yeah, I'm sure everyone else has noticed. Running a horse and buggy.
Oh.
To make a little voice would sit there. And in the walk of them to use, uh, a catch, you know, whatever that's called, media horse person. What is that called? Yeah, poop bag.
Like a typical like you're at a mall, it's just like.
A lot of righteous food for thought, people out of business.
Yeah.
Talked about that a bit more.
It will literally just celebrate like a first grade, but like, I'm just.
Yeah, I know. But yeah, we'll come back to it. Uh, I'm also. Liz.
Um, I've gotten several calls, texts, emails about if we're going to have basketball, if it's going to be inside the gym, what's going on with basketball? So we can have some answers for people. So they stop for asking me, that would be fantastic. Cause right now I've already gotten stuff like apparently we're renting out like space at the space, which is absurdly expensive. I know parents are like myself are, you know, taking on that cost. It's like forty bucks an hour for the kids to practice there for basketball. So that that'd be cool if we knew off the deal was planned, so.
Good to see my report.
Great.
Me too. All right, Charlotte touched on the only thing I had, so we'll just kick that up later. Uh, so we'll lead it right into, uh, the town manager's report.
All right, uh, the request from boards and committees regarding the ARCA proposals, uh, we tend to always set as November 10th. That gets in before the holiday next week, uh, in time for us to kind of crap out, roll out to you guys that you'd see it all at once. Um, so hoping that some more ideas will roll in there. I've included the special town meeting results, local and state. Um, everything passed across the board by, you know, at least sixty points in favor of each item. So we, uh, with regards to the local issues, um, that being the local option, uh, on terms consumption on Sundays and days other than Sunday, that has to be certified and sent to the secretary of state's office. They certify and then they're going to send it to Babel. So that process has been taken care of today. It's at the secretary of state's office. Um, and I'm not sure of the timeline as to when that's going to happen. Uh, I can tell you, we've already had inquiries into the offices to the status of that and how folks feel about it. So, uh, we'll be keeping an eye on that and we'll keep you posted, um, as, as more comes in. Your nomination papers for town meeting will be available later this month, November 24th, and you've got the list of, uh, vacancies that will be coming up. It's a pretty wide slate of candidates. Um, the other thing of note there is your SAG 54 director, we have the vacancy there now. I only have two applications. If you know of anybody, that would be interested, encouraged to apply. Again, we're looking ideally for a deadline of November 10th, so we can pile it up and get it up to you in time of year so you can review it before the meeting and have a discussion here rather than just showing up and giving it to you at night of the meeting. Uh, the basement vault, that's kind of been a mess ever since I've been here. We did, we matched the shelving that we have upstairs here in the vault downstairs. Reorganized all of that, um, and it's, you know, it's heavy duty, uh, managing moisture into the total cost. So that's going to be probably around six hundred bucks. Uh, my estimate's right, it'd be three hundred labor, three hundred and fifty materials. Uh, and it's something that we shouldn't have to go back and revisit again. Uh, so that's a good chip off the block. And then next Thursday is a holiday. Veterans Day there. Uh, the airport advisory committee met last week. There were a number of things that were decided that, uh, we felt that needed to be communicated out to hangar owners. So a lot of everyone out, we have a copy of that letter in your packets. We'll burn the lawn and the airport item. Uh, but one of the big things with the transfer of hangers, these hangers are transferred, you know, before we even hear about them being for sale, they're gone already. Uh, and that delays significant in terms of getting reported to the office, which as long as we're getting paid great, but it's a violation of the lease. Those things all have to be timely uh, reported. Uh, and that was a concern of the advisory committee last week. Also stored a non-aviation equipment uh, on the premise. We don't do inspections customarily, but we're aware of it and it is in violation of uh, their lease agreements and also really undermines the goals of our facility. So that was also included in addition to a couple of other things that we'll talk about later on in the meeting.
Why don't we do inspections? Aren't we paying employees to be out there all the time?
Yeah, so we don't make the habit of inspecting the interior of people's premises, you know. Um, it's, we're going to inspect the inside some of these houses and get a complaint necessarily. So, um, the, I, I honestly, we talked about this with the committee and the committee said, no, it's not to that point yet. The goal is just to encourage compliance, voluntary compliance rather than, um, the penalty. But I think the letter going out is enough to flag to the people that aren't complying, that we're looking for compliance and eventually we'll seek compliance. Uh, cemetery committee, they've toured almost all of the cemeteries. Uh, they're going to wrap it up tomorrow in the room, out to Oxbow, being on the Hilton farm, uh, and then Withum Cemetery, which is across the street from Lambert's, stuck up in behind.
Withum Cemetery has disappeared.
It's there. We've got an eye on it.
I was up there twice in those woods. We found two tombstones that were knocked down. And one that was kind of standing up. Uh, Joanne Quembake, who lives or did live right there, um, said that, uh, she has seen people in, it was quite a long time ago, going up there and taking out tombstones. So you're not going to find everything that's listed.
Right. And I don't, you know, they, nobody's really ever been out there. We do, it's very little and the folks on the community just want to see it. So, uh, they're going to go up there tomorrow. Uh, can take care of that. We talked about landowners because we're going in deep into people's property. Um, and so both are sensitive areas. Uh, they're also going to meet them the next week on the 10th to discuss their findings from cemetery tours as well as future budget requests uh, for the cemetery department and long-term goals there. Um, so that'll be coming back to you folks later on in the season. November planning board meeting has been canceled, but they will meet in December, uh, for the sake of uh, next year's budget and also to review the findings of their electronic sign board survey. The grant for sidewalk reconstruction and extension is still on track. So remember that's a two-phase project. Uh, that's largely supported by state funds, but then also there's support from federal funds. Um, and so that's on track and is a potential that's going to come in with even more assistance based upon the outcome of the transportation bill. It's up in the air. Uh, we should hear at the end of January, early February as to how that will come out. So, um, just going to keep an eye on that. Uh, your tax rates, those are flat over the last time and actually we lost, I think, just a small point on each, uh, in large part because we've issued some uh, supplemental bills that haven't been collected yet. Uh, parks committee met this afternoon just before this to discuss a holiday stroll, which will be on the afternoon, the December 11th. Start country one, they thought the two to four was a little short, so we're going to go one before. Um, and if anybody wants to volunteer, participate, um, anything like that, um, please reach out to myself or Val or Sherry. Uh, and we're going to meet again before your next meeting at four thirty. So the seventeenth at four thirty will be the next meeting where hopefully we're going to get some folks in more organizations, businesses or whatnot. I saw the community pounds, pound the pavement, uh, to get that off the ground. So we'll see how that goes. The fire department, uh, did their fire safety month meeting, or some of the kids in middle stream, it was rainy, but the rain actually held off the flow to the truck. Uh, went really well. Rick Caldwell from Scoville Fire, I mean, the guy is just amazing with the kids. If you haven't seen it. Uh, it was, it was pretty cool and the kids were really receptive to it. So we did activity books that we produced in-house and then they had some fire hats. They gave it out to all those kids and it was a good experience. Um, for Brett and then our two full-time firefighters. The fire department was also working on their AFG grant, which was submitted uh, earlier in the year on a delayed grant cycle. Uh, we weren't successful and they're attributing that to, uh, a rowing is called on, uh, through a computer grading and it was something about the rural combination of harness. Uh, and supposedly that's been resolved. So if we're successful in this application, the local shares estimated at eighty-three hundred dollars on that hundred and seventy-three thousand dollar purchase. So, um, that's something that we are going to need. And so, um, if we can get it through a grant and the grant writer or grant consultant that we're using, um, that's all good opportunity there. Todd's keeping a close eye on that. So hopefully we'll get some good news from there. Uh, the congressional directed spending, which we knew was a long shot that we submitted, uh, that's we get a new Senate earmarks. That was like the eight million dollar project was all unsuccessful. There are very few programs from Maine that were actually funded. Uh, and there's opportunity to work with Congress, uh, our congressmen to, uh, see other avenues of funding. So uh, King's office is the one that's reached out to me since, and so we're going to look at that. You know, it is what it is. Uh, recreation, uh, basketball recreation signup, rec basketball signup has been open now for about a week and a half. And every Sunday from nine to ten, there'll be in-person signups to the school. There's online signups available. We have registration forms that are on the counter. Uh, and masks are required in the building by all participants and all volunteers and all observers and members and everything else. That's the policy of the school. The school shut down the use of their gym, uh, for everybody other than us. Um, so that makes it really difficult. Bobby chose putting together a schedule for me in terms of open gym. Uh, basketball skills, so we're able to get that to the school. That's the condition of us using the gym. Uh, and talking with Bobby Joe and some of the coaches that have been on board already, they're fine with that. If that means adding basketball or not, that's kind of how it happened before. Um, and we think that that will still be good for the kids. So, uh, that's where we're at on the rec. Uh, I'm attending the water district meeting tomorrow. They have a couple of things that they want to run by. So, uh, you know, in a couple of weeks, we'll probably have something to deal with from them. Uh, and then your regular schedule is built out. One thing to note, the library meeting was scheduled for, um, Thanksgiving, they bumped that up a week and Donna will be in on Tuesdays this month, the second and fourth Tuesday, because her days will both fall this. Three other things, two short ones, please. Start thinking about town report dedication, please. If you have any of those ideas, send them along. All CSF America, that's a volunteer award. If you have any ideas for that, we send those along. And then the last item is the county American Rescue Plan Act money. Um, and that is the Somerset County received almost ten million dollars, uh, in ARCA funds. I was in Canada, so I kept an eye on that and they're offering like a grant program. They have a pocket for public town officials. Uh, to get some ideas, what folks wanted to see, and then they evolved out kind of a nondescript grant program so that, uh, municipalities and nonprofits in the county could apply for projects that may apply under. And they haven't committed an amount, but they put a program in place. So I hadn't heard anything from anybody. What are they doing with the ten million dollars this time? They didn't call the budget committee and they haven't called town officials. Uh, and supposedly they're trying to pay off the jail bond with this money that comes in. Which I think is a, a, a quick thing, but the money is probably going to be spent somewhere else. And I think that undermines really the ten million money, uh, in the sphere of that money. So I'm keeping an eye on that. I've asked them to consider, uh, talking with the budget committee, talking with uh, officials throughout the communities, uh, and the administrator as of last week has told me, no, we're not going to the taxpayers for input. The county has needs and we'll send it to the county. So very discouraging news on that. That money is intended for the county and its municipalities. Uh, and there was so many other good things going on in the counties around us, discouraging. So I did reach out to commissioner Cisak, who represents us. Uh, and told them to stop and he's the only one that's in favor of not paying off the jail. He said, if we need to do, um, no Eric straight up grades anything like that. The jury was in favor of that, that he was, let's get some of this money back into the communities and those organizations that might have been bad. So, um, not great that it was there, but something worth passing along and Jim, I own your own budget committee. So, I don't know. I just feel like it's a missed opportunity.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Which fine.
So. That, who will you play you? On the session, we'll have a better share of the, what do you want?
Discussion, um, that we approved, General Moret, your six for thirty thousand seven hundred thirteen thousand fourteen cents.
What's the second, any further discussion? I see now, all those in favor.
What would come? So. I'm here kicking knees again on this. I'm sorry. I'm here just kicking knees again on the removal of the speed bump on Upper Main Street. I know you guys keep kicking it forward and don't really want to take a stand on it. But my point again would be that the three, at the time that they put it in, road committee, the road engineering and prior town manager all pulled it being put in, said it was not the proper spot for it. You were, the selectmen decided to go forth on their own and put it in. And last year, whether or not this individual is well liked or not, he did come up with a petition with many more times the amount of people that wanted to remove than that, than wanted it on there. In, in a democratic process, I would think that would hold a little bit more weight than the half a dozen families that's got and wanted it there. And I'm not asking the town to come up with any money for the removal of it. I have said a number of times that I have, I'll, I'll pay for the removal and the fixing up just to get it out of there. I will take, I will incur all costs. But I believe that what's standing in the way is the fact that I believe as a board, you guys made a mistake in how it got put in there. And what's standing in our way now is not realizing, not admitting, maybe it wasn't quite done properly. And addressing the fact that many more taxpayers in this town feel that it is was, it, it is not where it should be. So I feel that you're doing a disservice to the number of people who have put their name on that petition. I don't like the fact that the people petitioned to give the CMP thing, put on the thing, and I lost that battle. But there was more numbers there and that's how this works. And I don't believe that it's being attended to in a proper manner now. And I'm just asking you to reconsider and take this into consideration. Carrie no longer walks kids up there. Okay. She's got bigger fish to fry on the one, on the one who's up. So some of the arguments that have been made, I just, you know, I, I feel that we could do better. Downland Depot Street, that's, that is exactly where Derek Engineering said that these were made to control the flow of traffic. They got people going across the street to New Balance, all sides of the street. People were using it for a bypass to try to get around the, to try, try to get around the traffic here and they were speeding. They're whizzing down through there at sixty miles an hour with people on both sides, but that's not the case here. The case up here was Bob Hawkins said that every time you guys make the road smoother, the traffic goes faster by his house. Well, if that's the case, I'm pretty sure Jim Lyman wouldn't mind having a speed bump on Ward Hill in front of his house. I'd like to have one coming out of, out of, out of my pit. I can't believe I haven't gotten accident yet. So if that is what you're hinging this decision on, decision on, nobody has ever been hit as a pedestrian on Upper Main Street. So I just want you to get a more careful consideration. I've said my piece. I'll, I'll, I'll be back to kick you in the knees again if that happens, but I mean, I appreciate you. Thank you. And by the way, thank you for last year's dedication. I appreciate that very much.
I wasn't going in, why did it go in? Like, I wasn't here when, when the first place, like, what?
Well, it was, it was a long process. I mean, it was, we got, they were five years, five years.
Residents, yeah, residents on Upper Main Street were complaining about the speed. Mostly, I think.
I feel like all I heard was.
No, 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 actually, actually, Bob Hawkins would even tell you that it was not the truck speed that they were after. He was, he was very specific in saying that it wasn't the truck speeds that were being the issue. The issue was people, listen, they flat foot it. You know, again, I say, come up to my house. If you come out of my bed, there is, there is people, there are people, that is a nice little straight stretch. Young fellows with a lot of pipes, white vehicles going up through there. I mean, people are traveling sixty, seventy miles an hour when they go by the end of my driveway. So it is a number. So I understand his concern about a speed bump being the answer. But I, but I just don't believe when, when even Derek says that is not the proper place for it. The proper place for it is school zones in, in like you've done on Depot Street. It is, they are serving the right purpose on our street by Depot Street. Because there really isn't many, there are not many residents and none of the residents that actually live on Depot Street would have to go across those to get to their house unless they were coming in for it. They haven't had one which to not. So I think they're serving their purpose there very well. But this is not the same circumstance. And I think it was put, like I said, I understand the complaints the first time, but as you've seen like last year with the number of people that signed a petition to say, we don't want it there was many times greater than the people that.
I can't remember how.
You guys, you put it through to senior ballot, you guys didn't, you pushed it forward to the voters, right, at town meetings.
Yes, right, okay.
But I don't understand how it got to that point because it didn't get to that point to get put in.
No, well, we did these.
But, but, but what I'm trying, what I'm trying to say is, I mean, you pushed it out to the voters to, to resolve this, but you didn't push it out to the voters to put them in. So I don't understand.
So you think that we.
There's a double standard here. Why?
Should we take it out to them again?
Why?
We decide to take it out. I'm just curious what you think on that.
You had, okay, I think that you had a petition with, I believe it was a couple hundred signatures.
Yes, you got.
It was, yes, it was. It's, but it's, but if you had six families that complained of there, it was a roughly si- a half a dozen families. The numbers are five greater in the people that signed a petition that don't want it than wanted it. And, and understand, I was told by one of the residents on Upper Main Street, my opinion didn't matter because I don't live on Upper Main Street. My road is a continuation of the Upper Main Street, but so why do their opinions, why do those six families' opinions hold more water than a hundred and fifty to two hundred opinions? I mean, if this is a democratic process.
You convinced me the first time. I think that's how you bet it up to the voters. Cause you do make a good argument, so.
But, but it didn't, but it didn't go to the voters and I believe that it, it didn't go to the voters the first time. So I'm not exactly sure how this is. The process wasn't the same.
Right.
In what you did to put it in as it did the second time. And I don't, and I'm just, I'm just addressing that. I'm not pointing fingers. I'm just.
I will have to save some time and talk about our speed bump and that one in particular. So it doesn't fall on deaf ears.
I, I, I understand. I'm not trying to just, I'm not trying to be a thorn in your side, but I believe that the process has been taking the proper course and I'm just asking you to do so as well.
Okay, right on. You leave them. Thank you.
My son. My son, my son is ready. Thank you again.
So you might.
Oh, yeah.
Four jobs.
Oh. And then on the comment. Okay, all right, uh, moving forward there. Mike took all of my two minutes. Uh, the budget goals for this coming cycle. But I know we touched on it briefly last time. Uh, I don't know if anybody had put any extra thought to that where they had or.
You got any particular grant funding or just regular or department budgets?
Yeah, like making projects or anything like that outside of the, our, our courses against the media. But, you know, as I start to build the regular budget, it's a matter of, is it, is money going on roads, money going over here and getting one up and running down kinds of thing. They got loaned out areas to roads that didn't get grant funded.
Right.
And those are down. I don't think that we can do it. So it's.
We're going to give the road committee in a couple of weeks to figure it out, but I mean, it's just a curve. Senior road's fine. It's by the wrong road where we're going to have that lane shut down for one winter, maybe even two because of the lack permanent.
And that's right.
There's not much right to do with maintaining that piece through this winter and looking at that.
So that's its own thing. So I mean, we've got a sewer park. Most everything wrapped up at the ball field minus the, uh, jack piece, uh, the storage and batting gauge piece. We get the airport with what they decide out there. And I don't know what other.
You mean what they decide up there?
Uh, well, the committee's meeting, uh, I know we're going to touch on that just in a minute. I don't want to overstep. But so with, so the airport's its own piece and that's right. Only on the potential to spend the money that I see with sewer parks. I mean, does anybody else see or?
I've got some stuff under the ARCA funds that we talked about. We'll talk about that more. And this is more with fire budget. And I realize that now they've been using their bigger trucks and getting them out so they don't rust and the brakes don't get crappy on them and stuff. But we've got two full-time firefighters over there. Uh, we discussed maybe, uh, like the sewer has a truck or the.
Yes, yes.
The road foreman has a truck, you know, something that you're not driving an F-550 around to go to Scotty again to get fire extinguisher change. I'd rather see them put miles on something like that than to burn up a six hundred thousand dollar fire truck running to Scotty get banned. And I'm sure they.
At three fifty, a gallon of gas too.
And maybe they take their own vehicles and get ripped. I don't know how that works, but I would just think you get. You got two full-time firefighters over there now. You know, something more economical.
Yes.
Maybe there.
What do you do here? Well, when people have to run.
We've been miles during the month of.
Yeah.
I feel like they had it come up before though. There was something about like a chocolate midnight for something. Didn't they already talk?
Jim talked about it a little bit so.
Yeah. The only other thing I was thinking this could be ARCA funds are here, but we were kicking around this theory about, um, food. Food pantry.
Yes.
And the fact that, you know, the fire department is looking to do a small expansion for storage and you know, and we have some fixes over there. We really don't know how that's going to come out on the face of. You know, do you put an addition onto the building? Do you with a couple more doors for storage and then a place that's heated that you can store food and you can have something centrally located where you have staff once a week or a month. I don't know what the schedule was, but something like that.
I think that's an awesome idea. That's, I feel like it's like the two, but it's going to be either here, it's going to be there where we already have staffs. We're not paying someone additionally. And where we do have, I think that's perfect. I mean, they're asking for the more storage. We do have to fix something. So if we can tie the cost of building it onto it and we have those funds, I mean, we need to establish something for that since we don't have that anymore. And like, until we can, we have to invest the money so that it can become its own entity for like its own kind of nonprofit. Um, we already kind of, I think we're all sort of on the same page as setting up our own sort of food bank for that stuff. So I mean, we have these funds that that is probably the closest we've all come to something actually like full-on straight face, what it's intended to be used for. And I think if we do have to kind of, you know, we have a lot of other things, but we'd really like to get the money for it. That's what it's supposed to be for. We should, you know, do our best with that. And if we can make it work for some of our other needs with the, you know, the building, I think. You know, I think it's a really good opportunity for the fire department. It's also a good opportunity for like the community too. I think we should definitely be exploring that.
Yeah, so size and space requirements that we think we really need and where we're invested.
That's genius, like genius.
Genius, that's good. That whole, really, that roots in my life, that would be like that.
So the other thing is, at, at one point, as we were winding.
From the old one?
I think so.
Refrigerators, freezers.
Yeah.
As we're winding down our sewer branch, do we have any balance there? Is that gone?
Yeah, so we looked at the roof, we looked at the garage and things like that. So, um, USC agrees, just let us wait.
Okay.
Until spring.
Yeah.
Or whenever that we might be able to get something a little bit more.
So we might be able to add some money to that. You know, to put a garage in, to keep our equipment out of the rain or whatever we need to do there. Um, but yeah, I didn't know what our balance was for say of that and deadlines. Yeah, exactly. It's amazing you can't find somebody that would build that structure. It's, have you, have you seen?
You'll be able to build a garage for us. Or is it a dump? When you put the federal paperwork with it, the design plan and everything else.
Have you seen, uh, Dan's new barn?
I haven't been in the barn.
That's like, uh, probably sixty by eighty, twelve foot clearance, all steel, uh, in pandemic times, honey. Hundred and thirty local building, you know?
This thing's cheap.
You know, which is a lot of money, but so for something, something a third that size, you know, I can't remember what our bid was. It was three hundred and something crazy.
Yeah, yeah, it was high. I thought it was due because it wasn't big.
Oh, predictable.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, we send out a bid pack like that.
Oh, yeah.
And you find a warranty shoot, then you lose it.
I understand. That's all I had right now. I've got a big list for ARCA funds, so.
Yeah.
That's really what we are, this is the conversation best, yeah. That's the whole point. So I mean, right. That's really what we are, this is the conversation best, yeah, that's the whole point. So I mean, right on.
Yeah, that, I mean, the other thing I would add is that is like, you know, I do think that some like cameras placed around town, like that was the other thing. It was. You know, a fairly decent sized expenditure for us to have that kind of, you know. Lined up it's because that was, you know. I think that was gonna be a big expense for us. We weren't ready to kind of just pony up, but if we could do something like that, especially if we're gonna have, you know. More traffic coming through the park, food, you know, swimming and stuff out there. I think that's gonna bring in, you know, a whole different crowd of people and that is, you know, well. For there is like some concerns for me with that, just who's gonna be down there, like the hours and stuff. I think that we really, if we're not gonna have people down there. I think we do need to have that kind of stuff down there, um, just vandalism, just for safety, um. And some of the other places, if we're gonna have sidewalks and stuff done, just, you know, if we're gonna be having, you know. Money being invested in things being nicer, I think we need, we have a new diligence to just. You know, be responsible for it and make sure that we protect our assets that we're putting in. If anything's nice, we wanna make sure if someone's out there with a carrot. A spray paint acting like a wanker that we could be like, hey, look at your face. Yeah.
When do they start on anything to do with downtown as far as sidewalks and granularity and stuff like that?
So the grant for sidewalks is the announced date is supposed to be the end of January, first of February.
So when would we wanna start on our lighting and all that? Would that be post or part of?
It's part of it, it is right time.
So there's no way to really get a handle.
No, but you, we, we were going to. We'd already agreed to purchase the lighting and everything. And then we pumped the brakes because we were waiting for the downtown plan. Uh, we agreed to purchase the two lights, which took a year and a half to get here. Those will be going up next week in the heart of Long Island, covers the old restaurant. And then as a part of this grant application, we actually. Budgeted for lights to go from the corner to the corner and to go up to the bank.
Yeah, right.
That was their recommendation for safety, for appearances and if they're gonna do it, they get out the door right.
What will we have working for this? Winter and summer for downtown lights existing. Will everything be working for? It won't, will it? Because well, nothing works now.
No.
No, so we'll spend this entire stretch as well as into next spring and summer with no lighting down there?
You've got your regular street light and that's it. The decorative lamps, they work when they want to. We brought people once, take a look at them and nobody figured it out. We've replaced sensors and things like that.
So we're just kind of stuck with that until.
Couple more things. We looked at developing our community development person. We've advertised for that.
Not one application.
Not one, and that was gonna be TIF funds if we did.
But no, it's, you know, it's a really flexible job. I had two people actually asking about it yesterday.
Yeah, okay.
But when you talk about background, you said we need some of this professional grant, right? And then some just general grant experience. A lot of us are planning to grant.
Right, right.
Forward out and uh, you know, helping with. You know, TIF committee administration and things like that. Because I mean, the TIF committee is looking to. Expand what they offer the program, uh, beyond the five that we're all looking at right now and so. Uh, there's discussions I think that'll come up. Probably starting in the next month about how to shift or change the facade and then other opportunities that are there.
Couple other quick things.
Is there any ability like what we had with the fire department to contract with, um, you know, how we like basically hire like a grant writer for like some of the fire department? Can we do something like that with like the TIF committee? Like if we can't find someone that's full-time, is there other services out there where we could do that with like a person that did that for like. Town and economic development? Is there like something like that? If we can't get a person, can we get like? A service to do that? Yeah, can we use money for that? I mean, if we, if we really like put it out there and really try and we couldn't get that person. Would we be open to trying something like that to see if we could get some bang for our buck and at least try to like throw a net out there to find some stuff and. I don't know. I just, I hate seeing dollars that are out there and we're just not like. Sarah, um, she's the one who started Farmers Market in uh Scotty again, um, which is her last name. I know she got remarried. You know who I'm talking about, um? No, 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 uh, Sarah, um, blonde hair, uh. She started the Scotty again one. We used to have Moody Town, uh, not Moody Town, um, that's yeah, that's George's, um. Yeah, she was one who I was thinking of and I thought she was gonna reach out to you, but um I talked to her this summer and she seemed like she was interested, but she never. Reached out apparently, but.
But that's a good idea with the potential.
Yeah, I mean, if like, if that works for the fire department, like why couldn't that maybe potentially work? I mean, it might be significantly less expensive, but we could just kind of see. Even what programs were even available, you know, to us and try it out at least and see what we could kind of, you know, cast our net and catch maybe. I don't know. Sorry, I didn't mean to. I just knew I forgot.
So yesterday at the elections, we had the, some kind of sheriff's department had someone there. Did we pay for that?
Uh, it's through the school as of right now because of the vaccine.
Yeah.
I think I'm gonna end up assuming that cost because we're eligible for it.
Sure.
For associate.
Pardon? Don't we normally? No, we don't.
Hey, so that's all really, oh, okay.
So my thought is while we're looking at budgets and we're talking about public safety, a couple of things, we decided not to spend. Two hundred and fifty thousand for startup and a hundred and fifty thousand a year to have a full-time contract person here. But there may be an opportunity for those à la carte services. If you need somebody to do a traffic detail that aren't available or work here or do this. Maybe we should start looking at putting a little money in a fund for that in a public safety budget. We also talked about if we're not gonna do that, maybe you need to have our code enforcement officer. Do more enforcement activity or have David do our. Our buildings and this and everything else and then either have him do extended hours or bring someone else in to backfill for. You know, the parking dog. Violations, the littering violations, the whatever we have for other enforcement.
Yeah.
Kind of action that we talked about that one of our meetings, but. Yeah.
Yeah, it seemed like that's why we wanted the cop in the first place, kind of was just to enforce this. That was what we wanted enforced. It was basically what a code enforcement. Would do because the stuff that the cops weren't gonna be able to do anything about anyway, so, yeah.
So I don't know what David's hours look like now or if if we're getting everything done that we need. Or if we need to put some more money in that funds for next year.
What how how is that?
So it's sufficient. He takes appointments a lot and so for the four hours of administration, obviously peaks and valleys. So today he was physically, he was off last week. And so.
So is he getting his hours?
Yeah, they're a lot. Well, I mean, we settled for four a week. We usually pay six, eight, seven depending upon workload. But you're gonna get into a dry spell here, so so we're chipping away at enforcement, uh, violation enforcement before we sell them.
Yeah.
So I think I had three junk yards. Illegal dumping, uh, no.
Yeah.
And inspection for, um. A permanent junk guy compliance on that. It's like those kind of things. I'm trying to chase, I'm driving around, making notes and so we were chasing those things today.
Is he open and available for more time? Like if we wanted to contract more for that or no?
He's Augusta, full-time.
Posted from Augusta.
Right.
And then I'll I'll pick him up and it's few and far between because he just lost one question off to down Belgrade, Sydney. And whatever other community seems covering. So David's covering them as well. He's permanent, uh, inspection event right now. And so it's a, Katie colleagues talking about. Rolling out, we did that before, was successful. They're talking about uh kind of a lot of, I think we could maybe team up with another community that's good fit. Then we could do something like that, but. Unfortunately, it's one of those things where it's like able to roll or assessing. It's few and far between in terms of what they're so for.
Just like an extensive training this one has to go through and certification or something like that? And that's why it's just not a.
It's bad. It's the contractor positions. How many times do you need a full-time code officer? And so you're not getting your benefits. So you might be getting decent wage, but you're not getting benefits. And so, you know, whether we can get, unless we're gonna fund for the hour position.
Yeah.
Then we can't, we're not gonna off benefits theoretically, maybe maybe up there too. But you know, it's just gonna be a four or eight hour week and then they're gonna have to go get a job somewhere else.
So do you have like twenty hours a week or not for us?
Yeah. Seven.
Oh, really?
Okay.
Eight on busy week?
Yeah.
But you know, we call it, somebody call a text and he'll go up and expect to set it on a Sunday morning.
No, would that be something that we wanted to? I mean, like we explored the cost of an actual like having our own. Like police, like, you know. We call a unit personnel. I mean, obviously that would be significantly more expensive than having our own code enforcement. I mean, is that something that we would wanna look at? I mean. That's probably significantly less expensive for us.
Could we keep him busy for forty hours?
Or could we, where there is such a shortage, could we contract a person out? I mean, like if we got someone in like and we did do it forty hours, could we? Sell out our person? I mean, could that be something that like, you know, if there is such a demand for that, could we, you know, share it with? You know, another town? I mean.
Just think about our current problems that we have that.
We use now seven hours a week. If we use them fifteen hours a week, we could double what we have now and let them go out and. Work in two other towns like, uh, works out of us and benefits paid through us. I mean.
You can't get him in the court anyway.
Right, one of the, the things that he works on are. I don't even know the word, uh. Or civil organizations.
Right, but they, there's a go nowhere, do nothing, drag it all over ten years. Every current one that we have, it's not a issue problem. I mean, these things predate.
Probably me. On this board, so more hours for him wouldn't solve these problems. I don't know if it would. Help deal with new ones that are developing under those things. I just don't know under his current title of what code does. Uh, I think for that forty hour position, he'd have to wear multiple hats where he was doing multiple things for us and I don't.
I just wonder if the presence of someone being there and like.
Is he the incoming inspector as well? Yeah.
It's tough. We don't really inspect buildings as far as that goes or rentals. I would be supportive. Yeah, so good thought. Yeah, maybe we can revisit that one.
Yeah, the big obstacle, like what you were saying, this is a problem and you can fund the code position at a reasonable rate, go buy a car. And you know, go around town, but then you're into another fifty, sixty grand a year and no fees for the enforcement. And then maybe, maybe you don't resolve it. So typically what happens is you spend one or two thousand bucks, seven letters and it kind of resolves itself. And two or three years later, you're back on the same thing.
It's very frustrating that it's, it's, it's. Two or three things that develop in multiple places, but it's always the same two or three things that.
Yes.
Lead to unresolvable issues that extend for a period of time.
It had an ordinance passed. You know, there may have been a bigger need for that or when it.
Potentially, right.
It may be more intentional there, so.
Yeah, all this stuff and the point of the hand and this one, right, so right on this, yeah. So we'll probably have it again uh on our next meeting, so continue to think about this stuff because it's right. Move us forward. But uh, right, so the uh. Airport advisory recommendations.
Yes, so I gave you a couple of the letters, a couple of the other facility things that we discussed. The generator, we ordered that generator eight months ago probably, um, hopefully it'll be in the next few months. Uh, but that's a a a nice operational tool for the airport and well overdue. Um, we've got the twenty twenty-two federal project for next year, which is tentatively, um, sealing and striping again overdue. Uh, talking about other facility needs, it's the parking lot, uh, that really needs to be paved. And whether or not we can lump that in with a regular paving contract in summer or if it's a standalone project or whatnot. I think to me it makes sense that we would put it in as an option on our paving contract, which is a whole front piece right there when you come in.
Right side of the gate.
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, and so I think the most cost-effective thing would be to put it in as an option on our summer pavement. Um, but that was listed, discussed as a priority for uh the pilots. And then the other thing is a courtesy car, uh, or just having access to transportation out there. It's a big deficiency for the airport because you can fly in and then you can't go in there because it's four miles to move to, so. Uh, a couple of the pilots have picked that up as kind of their thing. Uh, they can seek out, you know, maybe you could get a sponsor. Uh, from a car dealership that would put out a used vehicle and advertise on that or whatnot. Um, and. My understanding is that we would pay for the insurance, which is pretty reasonable, and then these pilots, just as a courtesy program with, you know, throw money in the cup holder and fill the tank up. So they're working on that. We're gonna see if it comes together, but uh, that was listed as one of the priorities for the airport. So then back to the terminal building. So. Three months ago-ish maybe, um. The presentation regard to TIF about the uh potential for a new building. Uh, we had a good productive meeting the other day, uh, the benefits of a whole new terminal. The benefits of working what we've got just in that shell and then the benefits of using our existing shell and putting an additional back. Um, and the consensus of the group was renovate the existing terminal and propose an approximate expansion of twenty-four by thirty-two. On the backside, meaning towards town, um, to the fence. So that would come out, the fence. There would be removed and the whole width for that terminal building would be the back entrance and the barrier to the, um, taxiway. The addition would. Establish restaurants, conference space, and then provide for the other ADA deficiencies that we have. Uh, as long as we don't do anything, we're not out of compliance, but secondly, touch something that could bring anything to compliance. Uh, and it is something, you know, we've got the angel flight, we've got pals flying in and out on occasion. Um, and and really the public building, we should have ADA access to restaurants. So.
But there's never been that there before and it's never been an issue before though, right?
Right, so we're talking, right, so this is, I mean, it started with a discussion about TIF and and potential opportunities for economic development utilization of TIF funds. Um, and so then it's just kind of exploring as to what are the options for the airport if rebuilding the terminal. Uh, is the feasible answer if we just do nothing? Uh, and. One of the folks that was out there said, you know, you look at the market, you look at the building and. We try to use what we've got. We try to renovate what we've got because that's gonna be most cost-effective. I mean, it's not. And it might be easier and cheaper to knock it down and just build the one next to it. Uh, and so they decided that they would like to seek an assessment of the building with a cost estimate to renovate and expand. Um, which I was gonna bring to tonight for approval, um, if it was gonna be terribly, uh, cost prohibitive. I spoke with Al Hodgson's office, who's done, uh, did that for us at the old fire station. So we performed all for us affordably in the time of the manner. Uh, and the cost estimated seven hundred and fifty dollars, uh, which is extraordinarily reasonable for the building conditions as well as cost estimates. Um, and they're available come out next week to do an inspection, um, and then develop a report after that. So it's time sensitive if. We wanna move on this, uh, in terms of getting into the budget for next year. I think the general consensus is that folks don't wanna spend a large chunk. Um, of. TIF revenue without an okay from the townspeople if you're starting to talk in hundreds of thousands. Uh, and so we need to get this in order as quickly as we can. So that's why we went to Al Hodgson and hopefully we're gonna have that back. Um, by the second week of December, uh, hopefully before that, if the absolute latest, we're able to take a look at that, get the advisory committee back together and see how that one proceed.
Yeah, I think that's great. Uh, you want a motion on that?
No, I, I, I. If it was gonna, it was, I said, if it was over a thousand, I'd come to you folks and ask, and it was seven fifty and I said, so you can just keep this ball rolling and do the villagers on project. And that's really what's in everybody's best interest, especially the sensitivity by the time.
Yeah.
Uh, so I don't know, Brad was at the meeting. If you have anything to add or any other comments that you have. Um, and if you have any questions on us, whatnot.
Yeah, I mean, I think I, I see you shaking your head. Can you just tell me, I guess, what a question there is?
Yes, so the airport as it is right now, it doesn't break even. The town gives thirty thousand dollars a year. And it still isn't break even. So spending a couple hundred thousand dollars on a terminal. But there's nothing wrong except aesthetically and the bathrooms need to be upgraded. I can't find the financial reason. It's not. That we have, okay, if we invest this, we have potential to make this. I'm not seeing any business plan. I'm not seeing any potential revenue source from that. There's nothing that's coming that's a concrete. If we invest this, this is what the return on that investment's gonna be. So I need to see it from a business standpoint. What's the return on this investment? What's the timeline on this investment? Not just. With like a nicer building, um, and that's, that's the problem that I have. If everything I've seen from the airport, there's no money being made. All it is. Is money that's being lost. Um, everyone says, oh, it's the closest ever been to being in the black. That's actually, that's. It's really misleading because it's not. The town gives their for thirty grand a year and it's still with that influx of money, still not. Operating on its own. And their fuel costs, on their hangar fees and all that other stuff. It's still not making money on its own things. And so that's where I. Have an issue in investing more money if it's not able to financially support itself. So investing more money in something that's not able to financially. Flourish. I have a hard time putting more money into it.
Okay, we're, uh, so what the town does make money? So does the uh ATV trail make money? That you, that the town puts money in? Does the uh? That you, that the town puts money in, does the, uh, uh, rec department? And, and I love all of them, I mean. Uh, we had kids there, it was why we moved to town, and so.
But they're asking me for two hundred and fifty thousand dollar building now, you guys are, so I, I mean, I, I just understand. The what?
The school, down at the school, what was that?
Yeah, that was forty-five thousand dollars, so if you guys. Yeah, so what I, what I really want to do is, not apples to apples, it's a couple hundred thousand dollars per building. And I think we need to focus on this specifics of the building, so. We're talking about the airport, not the rec, we're not talking about the library, and I'm talking about, we're talking about the airport. And so if we're going to invest in the airport, I want to see what the financial rewards are of doing that for the town and what it does for the town, and that's. Basically what I'm looking for, and if you guys can do it, and if it makes sense for town, I'm a hundred percent for it. And if you can show that it's gonna bring business in and it's going to make money, and this is what it's gonna do. All day long, I would cartless for it, but if it's not going to make money and it's just because of the pool, I just, I can't get behind it. And I'm not trying to be a wanker around it, it's just, it's a ton of money and I cannot see the financial gain for the taxpayers. I just, I can't see it. I, I don't know, what is this trouble?
I, I think Brenda's question is, um. Right on the point. Because we support the library, they don't bring in money. We support the fire department, they don't bring in money.
Those are services, this is a lounge at an airport, so we support the runway and the hangars for the airport, this is a lounge for. Pilots to hang out in, right, like, I, I guess I just don't understand.
I guess, we support the dual park, I don't know how many use that, right, but we support that.
So.
We're gonna put four million dollars into our sidewalk, which. I don't walk on once every five years, but we're gonna put four million dollars into that, it's all part of our community. I don't use the airport either.
Off the wood that was cut from the airport.
That went into the airport, huh?
I'm on the TIF committee and. I think not enough is, you're focusing on the terminal as a place for the pilots. You're listening to the airport advisory committee and you're missing the big picture is economic development in town. That airport could really put Nordwalk on the map, you could make bigger businesses come here, particularly with Zoom now. Um, people are meeting regionally and coming together, I mean, Kenny talks about it, people coming in and holding meetings there and going there, I know him and nephew. In a different city is having the same kind of thing, where they all fly into a place, we have an opportunity. We have a lot of buildings around town, some. Like Origin and Farmington is an expanding business, making athletic equipment apparently, or apparel.
Right now.
We have an opportunity to develop some of the buildings that are in town, we've got to offer economically, you've got a regional airport that really could be something. I think you gotta get away from the idea of looking at it as a playground for airline pilots or whatever, it's an opportunity, and I think. I think TIF is underrepresented here, I think we, in TIF. We did not get to vote on an economic, economic development directive. We did, everybody there except for one person who was absent, said that this was the most important development that we could do. I think that, you know, I think it's in the meeting, in the minutes. The two people are all for doing this, it's not for us to come up with, with the business plan for it. But we're all for developing the airport, so don't just see it as new restrooms and a place for the pilots. I think, I don't even know why the advisory board is so involved in this right now.
Yeah, that's a great point, uh.
I think it's gonna be something that's gonna be really important for the taxpayers of the town to decide what they wanna spend that kind of money on. I think that's gonna be very important for townspeople to decide to spend that money on it. I think that is something that.
All, all ballot points.
I think that is something that's gonna have to be secret ballot for townspeople to decide what they spend it on. I think that is the only responsible way to do this, that, that's gonna have to be very clearly written out, how much money's gonna be spent, and then taxpayers vote on that. Not open where they have to raise their hand in front of people, but secret ballot on something like that.
There's some potential for that, that's a good point, I'm gonna just jimhead some real quick, I'll let you.
So, so the thing that I'll mention is, we actually rent that space at least eight weeks out of the year. For our riding courses, and when we go out there and we activate and have a quarter body brought in, for females that have to use a quarter body on the back forty. Or the students are sitting underground to eat their lunch, because they have no place to eat, or a host of other issues. For me, looking at it from our viewpoint, it would be great to have an expanded development support at a hundred percent. So, and we don't know what the cost is gonna be for that. But like the analogy, we're not in the business as a municipality to make money. Uh, you know, we don't invest in real estate opportunities, we don't do this and that, we get off of public service. And I think, you know, the exchange at the airport would be a huge public service. You know, the analogy of, you know, the rec department. You know, the ball field drainage or. You know, I don't know how much money you shoot, it's been reckless, no one has invested, whatever it's gotta be, it's not an annual thing of that. And it is TIF funds that we are spending thoroughly at this point, so, yeah, it would be a hundred percent and support it up.
Can I say one thing before we go to? Public meeting or anything, I think we really have to have a meeting with the TIF committee, I think we need to see what the plans are. Economic development, so you get an idea of what type of businesses might be brought in or what, you know, what can.
Well, drainage took us two years and a public vote to get forty-five thousand dollars for the drainage, so we're talking about that kind of stuff. I had to find two nails to get drainage on a swamp of a field for kids to be able to play balls, so I mean, for you guys to have a couple hundred thousand.
My economic development, you're willing to take the TIF funds and spend it on our development director. Spend it on some plans for developing this and making an asset, and put Nordwalk on the map, what we talked about, we're joining the. Chamber of Commerce, it's gonna be nice to see the Central Maine Regional Airport, there's a lot to offer, with companies from around the area, from around the state can. Have their meetings there, in conference center, you fly in, you meet, I think there's a lot of opportunity.
I think it would be great to have some sort of commitments or sort of interest from the businesses coming to us and seeing that type of interest from the businesses themselves and not just. I, you know. I think that we will have that, I think it would be nice to have some sort of, you know, correspondence from those businesses and not just. You know, like any sort of correspondence from Origin, from any of those places like.
These economic development options out there, looking into that and having someone explore that.
If there are tangible benefits to it, yes.
Right, so that's, that's something that should, you know, that one, it's really something that should be explored.
I'm not, yeah.
We wouldn't wanna undersize something because there was something.
Or, or that Becky was talking about, uh, Farquhar. He flies in there, a million and a half dollar airplane. Keeps it in Waterville, because, you know, other facilities here. And he plans on buying, uh, one that's gonna use jet fuel, and he would even be willing to put, put that in himself. And he wants to build a huge hangar out there, which is, you know, you get your taxes here.
Right, have him come to a meeting in H C D.
Yeah, he could give a letter that we did to the TIF, you know, if you want to do, uh, that same presentation here, we'd love to do it.
Yeah, I think that if we have like financial commitments like that, you know, if we have commitments like that, where we're going to invest, we have someone telling us that we're going to invest, but it can't just be. He's gonna say, then we invest this, thinking that we're going to have that financial backing, and then he doesn't do that. We can't just do that thinking someone's gonna do it, then they don't do it, you know, you can't. Build something because someone says they're gonna do it, but then they don't do it, that doesn't.
You, you have a good point, of keeping everything on track and not overstepping, which is, is, is.
I just think we need to be like, respond, I mean.
You, you have, you have a good point, you do.
So those were discussions of the advisory committee, hey. Uh, you know, point blank, tell me that economic benefit, this, is the terminal building, is it gonna do anything for the airport or is it just gonna turn the building nice? Both are some honest conversations that they had, we could go today, um. And I think that's why they ended up settling in the middle, instead of saying we're super in the middle, it's kind of a, let's do the in-between here. And there are still pilots out there, people have been there for a long time, that want to see that on group, um, that's. It's gonna be demonstrated, that's the ability that you talk about.
Can I say one more thing? What, you're talking about the pilots, what is in it for them really, to develop the airport? They've got their plane, they've got their company in and out, but they see it as, this is the town, it's beyond, it's beyond the pilots. It's not Kenny's terminal, it's not the pilot's terminal, it's something that the town could develop and be done for.
I think that's the problem, who does this? I think that's where we have to miss though, we don't have anyone doing that, there is no person doing it.
We're, we're, we're trying to highlight that, we're developing a person.
But until we have that, we can't invest, but this money, not everyone's gonna do it.
We're, we're not gonna be, and we'll find it this evening, right now, we'll just have you a nice conversation and, and making. Points and issues of what are valid and not, so you have a good point, that is valid.
And so we get someone like figuring out like how we're going to make this make money, like it, that's.
So that's a good point, and we will definitely keep that right in the forefront of how this will make money. But we're just having a discussion about the possibilities of it.
And, and the reason to comment on why I ended up to the pilots, if we don't talk directly to the consumers first, to see if there's a demand. It, it might not matter to them that the term, we could knock the terminal down, they just want access. And if that's what they're saying, then we don't need to build that terminal building for them. If we wanna build it for the community, then that's gonna change what we're doing in terms of the development out there. If we're gonna take it from an economic development perspective, if they say no, then, you know, we're, it's gonna be fine too, is what it amounts to, if the consumers aren't content. Or we don't help meet the need of the consumer, then we're not gonna prosper vehicles. So that's why we have to get the pilots on board first, and, and it was probably really, really early. And pretty mature to have presentations made to TIF and whatnot at the time that it was signed site. Just because we should have had the advisory on board first, on the same page to flesh everything out, instead of trying to play this act of bad. Mostly my fault, you know, we really should have had an advisory committee. Six months ago to say, hey, this is the discussion we're talking about right now, and, and what do you guys think? And then the pilots would have come out, so okay, this is what we're thinking, this is where we started, this is where we could have gone, and this is where we're at. Well, I think that's where they ended up settling, but, you know, if we can't meet the need of the consumer, then we're out of luck.
Okay, I'm sure.
Um, I'm just curious, Richard, about. The taxes that the airport pays on the hangars, does that get credited to the airport?
I don't believe this, that doesn't get credited to there. That's based on our, you know, the total value of the success.
Okay.
The hangar fees and whatnot.
And, um, do, do you still pay excise tax on airplanes?
Some people, yeah.
Unless they're like a special aircraft or experimental aircraft, isn't that what a lot of them fall into or something like that?
Modified experimental, I don't know how they classify, but a lot of folks have experimental. Uh, you know, the good pilots, you know, she's in, you know, the first of February registering all of the planes. And then you've got folks that just never, never, never pay, and what are you gonna do, you get a small plane, so for twenty-eight bucks. And it's unfortunate, because the, you know, person could be in here paying ten dollars on one, and, but she's still, you know, has twenty-eight, it's not paying. And so it's, it's frustrating, but, you know, the good people, that was the thing, the people that behave themselves up to the airport on an old lease that doesn't have all these requirements. Are people that care about the airport, that can do its best to the airport, and they don't really need to, they've been there for, um, so.
And the excise tax on this plane, you know, these planes that this, uh, origin wants, uh. It's big money. It's, it's a lot.
Was that to the town that registers that, or were they?
They have to base, we're looking, so it is a real case, it's a real case, to where it's right.
There's no guarantee that's based out of Nord, because we have people.
So I mean, really, it's been a while for me too, so clearly the board can use an update on the, in where it falls. Budgetary, and then physically, I mean, I have, I, I have been much farther than the front gate, except whatever the fire department, I've never been down by the hangars. I don't even know how many hangars there are, if they're full, what we charge for them when they're updated, so really, I think the entire, I mean, I. This is just me, but I think the entire board could use an update on where it falls budgetary.
Yeah, I, I, you know, if we run down like financials, so we can have a full understanding of like.
Right, before we make things like that, we should really know.
We have a fiduciary responsibility to have a full understanding of how it really works, yeah.
That sounds like a pro.
Well, I mean, uh, and we have a response, honestly, like, guys, like, I'm not trying to be a jerk, I'm not trying to be a jerk to you. Like, it's our responsibility, because honestly, the only, the reason I sit on this board is because three years ago, I was a. I was a soccer coach, the fields were a mess, and you know what I got told, actually, by Ronnie when I came here, when the, I was told that the fields were a mess, you know what you told me? Save up, save up, I didn't, told no budget, no anything, save your money, save up for it, and I got nowhere. That's why I ended up running for this board, because I got nowhere that no one would give me any money, and that's why I ended up on this board, so like. It, it's, you know, I, I get it, when you want something and you, you have to keep going after everything to get it, like, I understand when you're passionate about something and it's. What you're, everyone has the things that are important to them, and what's important to one person isn't important to another person, but. I feel like when you sit on this board and you're responsible for every other person's tax dollars, it's your responsibility to make sure that you're spending those dollars responsibly. And for me, I, I'm looking at it from a business standpoint, like, what affects the most people, what makes the most money business-wise? And if something makes money and is good for everyone in the town, great, but if it's not, we have to take a closer look at it. And I feel like with the airport, there's a ton of gray area, and it would be reckless and irresponsible if every single one of us sitting on this, if we didn't have a full understanding. Of all the financials of how everything worked at the airport, before we even remotely considered investing a huge chunk of money there. And we didn't understand what the full investment was and what the return on that investment was gonna be.
So clearly, we support the idea of getting refreshed on where the budget is and.
Understanding every incident.
Does everybody here have the time to carve out as a group to go to the airport, or should that be done?
Thousand percent.
Be done individually, as to where, then it doesn't have to be a town meeting, right? So we have three of us are the same place.
Why don't we have a slide between there?
Really?
In the, in the current building.
They used to have, the, the advisory board used to have their meetings upstairs, and it was pretty crappy.
Right, I don't know what the easiest way could happen, because really all that needs to happen out there is everybody needs to see everything, uh. Which there's staff out there that can be done at any point in time, uh, you can coordinate, Richard, and go out, would probably be the easiest, that's where. We have a meeting, it has to be televised, we have to have all this stuff out there, it's. Probably is easier, I don't know, I can't schedule another meeting without what we already have, as far as extra.
Okay, and, and I mean, like, it's gonna be a lot of work too, but like, I know Richard does most of the books, like, I just wanna have a full understanding of. Goes in and goes out.
Your hundred percent.
He does look, right. So Matt, we, we had an updated building.
Yeah.
Thanks, that would accommodate our.
Then we could, right, then we could, uh, so why don't we just all try to find time, next two weeks to go out there? You can set it up with Richard, but I don't need to be involved with this, right, and go along with it, I will, everybody else soon. You can get this on our next agenda, so that we can, uh, go over the budgets and everything, we saw out there, recommendations and that. Uh, I know we won't have questions by then, but at least we'll be on, we'll know where we are, so that we can have a bit more of an accurate.
Yeah.
Discussion.
And Kenny would love to take anyone who will up to take you to one of the other airports, so you can see what they have and what they offer. Um, you know, Bethel, uh, who went on, they went there, they have a new terminal building, and, uh. It's very nice, but.
They got a ski resort there, I mean, it.
Not very far, we have, I mean, Colby, I had somebody call the other day, trying to get to, on the other weekend when it was raining. From New York, flying somebody in for somebody, something at Colby, and, but couldn't. Was afraid that what was gonna be able to, you didn't become the minimums at Waterville, and we're gonna go to Nordwalk, wanna know how they're gonna get to. To Waterville, and I happened to be on the road from New Hampshire, I said, I was there, I let you take my vehicle, we'll get you there, but, um. And we had the one in Bethel, it's open to the townspeople, twenty-four, so you can walk in, they have a conference room. You go in, get on the schedule, you could have meetings there, I mean, it's not just a benefit. For airport people, it's to benefit the townspeople. I mean, we, the town doesn't have a place that you can go, uh, you know, boy scouts or, uh. Rec meetings or anything, right?
To have a boy scout choose to meet at the church.
Right.
No, I agree with you, you have to, all valid, uh. Yeah, I'm. I'm gonna keep everything moving forward, everybody is a pilot, standard TIF. Committee, and then, right, we'll get updated, and we'll have Washington's piece, and we'll have the information we need, we can make a decision on where we want, who's aboard. And, uh, right, I don't know what else we can do, or is anybody else everything in there?
Just one more comment, you mentioned the ski in Bethel, something that is coming up here that we've talked a lot about are the rail trails. What's gonna happen there, and that's a great opportunity out there for development along the lines of timing with that, I think. Um, just space, land to develop, that transports people to park. People to fly in, people, there's a lot of opportunity coming down the road, and we used to talk about way back when we, um. We're getting rid of the old fire station, we're talking about people possibly remarking from. Right in the center of the town where Alice every park is, you know, we talked about what the town could do and beat that.
Does that mean Becky, you're not gonna walk going back to the back of your house?
It's not gonna go to my house.
No, I really, actually, I, I appreciate you got me to, you know, and really help me to explain some of this, uh, discuss. I really think it's one of those things. So I mean, thank you both. Uh, I don't know if anybody else has anything, but. If you wanna see for our next meeting, I'll talk to that. And like, again, we'll all try to get on there, take a look at everything and really know where we stand. Uh, right, okay, moving forward, uh, discussion action on the animal shelter contract.
We have a contract.
Sorry. With Somerset? Somerset Human Society, we've been up there for five years now. Yeah, yeah. Uh, the rate remains flat at one point five seven per capita. So the contract fee for twenty twenty-two is five thousand two eighty-six nineteen. Uh, which is what it's been for the last four years.
And there's really, are there any options?
Uh, yeah, I mean, we were with Waterville, right? And then we changed when they started having their actions. And we would have just had that again.
We're thinking a lot more expense.
It, well, it wasn't no lot, but it was a little bit more.
But we didn't save any money when we moved. It was the expensive travel.
Right, right.
Uh, and the only thing any folks don't offer is that ability to drop animals twenty-four hours a day. And so we purchased a freezer a couple of years ago. It's up to public works garage, so you bag and pack and.
A live one?
No, we kennels them. If you get like, if you get a dead dog on the road.
Yeah.
Typically, you would take that to the shelter, it's gonna be murdered by the owner. They would bag it and they would freeze it. Well, Somerset doesn't offer that. So we have a chest freezer up to the garage. And the animal control officer tags, tags the animal and puts it into the freezer.
The way you said that is. So we just bought a freezer.
But Norwich doesn't find your dog at past six, cause. Bido's frozen.
Yeah, they use their key to the garage.
So what happens if like a dog's found it like alive still and like.
So you try to find it and then he'll hold it.
And what does he count that as? How was there? That's beyond, sorry.
All right, so, uh, right, we take a motion on that.
So.
Second.
Motion is second to go with Somerset Human Society. Uh, writing the amount of five thousand two hundred and eighty-six dollars and nineteen cents. Uh, over the paper. Other business.
Uh, we've got the minutes from yesterday's meeting. Uh, this is the three articles, your moderator and student questions. So those will be wrapped minutes if you can handle those to the agenda, we can get those in touch.
Whoa, man.
It's everybody. And so, uh, we do a motion to accept. Motion and, uh.
Okay, I'll move if we.
Any further discussion?
Someone helps her.
All those are favor. Uh, one other business piece I had was the manure piece. Uh, right, so if there was any other animal or not, obviously would be an issue. Uh, and it's, it's fair on, uh. And if you just wash your car and pull over on the end of Main Street and drive through Washington or and spread it all aside of your car. Uh, that's an issue. And it's endless. And if they're pooping on the sidewalk all down by the school, I mean, that's, where the kids walk that, I mean.
On the side.
No, they don't move on the sidewalk, but I mean, they poop just on the white line. I mean, they're not out in the middle of the road. So it's like. Half in the rain down lane, half at the edge. It's, I mean, I'm not, I guess I am a saint when I'm not, cause there ain't nobody else driving a horse and buggy. I, I just, I don't find this admirable or there's no reason that that. If not a bad body, they're catching the poop. I mean, nowhere else do you allow things to poop in public. You know what I mean? Uh, your dog poops in public, you clean it up. Your child poops in public, you clean it up. So your horse, is it's no exception to that. I mean, if it poops in the middle of the sign spot downtown, I mean, who cleans that up? Is the town supposed to clean that up? The taxpayers are gonna pay to clean up your horse. Well, you could say the same thing for a dog or a human poop.
Honestly, horse poop and dog poop are very different with, I mean, like, because it is so like bound up with hay, like. If you squirt it with like water, it breaks down completely differently than dog poop does. I swear to God. It's way, really, like, I, I, I know this is so gross, but like. I've got dog poop and horse poop in my house. And like, honestly, horse poop, it just like, it shit. There's just not as much like stuff to it. It's just like, it dries it. Horse poop is much different than like dog kaka for sure. Like it just, it's literally gonna wash right off versus like dog poop. It really.
So, I mean, maybe it is just me.
Yeah, it's, it doesn't smell like it's cooled off either. It doesn't. But it is.
All kinds of interesting facts.
I just wanna make a quick comment here. I don't know how many of you remember. But Scott Farms, he used to cross Martin Street Road. Numerous times, you must know this, Ron. And he would leave cow poop all over that road.
That smells.
So, I mean, you know, what's the difference?
Uh, if you drive your manure spreader down Main Street and you spread manure, you can guarantee someone's gonna call. So the difference is it's Main Street. It's not a back road. It's not your private residence. Uh. It, it's, it's a public area and, and it's an animal. You know, defecating in a public space that's shared by others. I mean, your rights don't trump mine. I don't wanna step in your horse poop. So keep your horse. Clean. I, I mean, it's pretty, I, I don't even see a gray area or why it's debatable. I, I don't.
I would bet if we look at state of the laws, I would bet there's like stuff that protects like. More stuff. I'm guessing if we look, there's probably, cause it's a. I would bet that there might be something with that. Like I bet with that weird laws with that.
I'm just gonna start with, has anyone even approached them? I know there's been a lot of hearsay, but has anybody even asked these people? I will personally buy the bag. I don't care. Could we approach them and ask them if they would use a bag if purchased or if they have one? I don't, do we, is that?
They would have to make it like, it's, like, it's not like a, it's not like a placid baby pond, but like, it's part of like an entirely harness system as a bottom, yeah.
So, exactly. Does, does the board support approaching these people?
No, no, yeah, because we can't start, we can't keep calling these people.
But there's multiple, it's.
Yeah. It's people of one faith.
Yeah.
Okay. So it's based upon their religion that we're talking about people tonight. So what I will do is I will reach out to other. Municipalities, the supports that has a large amount of horse traffic on the road and see how they manage it, how they work with it. If there's a legal allowance or exemption, uh, and I will follow up on that.
Okay. I would appreciate that.
I bet we're gonna have some funny main laws because of like, I bet there's gonna be some weird old main laws. I bet there is gonna be some weird. Cause I know that we had, they have like right of ways for the roads and all kinds of other stuff. Like, I bet we're gonna find some weird laws with it.
Very cool.
I know in Norwich, it was a law and I'm not aware that it's taken off the book that you couldn't walk your cow down Main Street.
There is often.
But you know what though? The guy who was here for the composting last, last meeting? I bet if you told him where the hor- the horse poop was, he'd come, he'd be so excited to come get it. You let him know where it is. That guy, I've never seen someone so excited about horse kaka. So he might come and get it. And it's like right on him, it's on the way to waste management, like. You just, you get him like liquid gold. Just let him know where it is. And like, we just solved the problem.
Okay, that's all I have. Under other business, I don't know if anybody else had anything else.
Four ponies, wow.
Okay, remember, we don't wanna be biased, okay?
I'm gonna bring in a dog term and a horse term, show you the difference.
It's, uh, anyone who rides a horse. I mean, your faith has nothing to do with.
I tell you what I'm not doing is picking up a horse because I'm riding on the road, cause I'm gonna be blind knuckling those reins the whole time.
Okay, uh, just one thing left here. I would have.
To adjourn, so.
I think you guys have the same thing as me.
I have a second.
Okay, uh, motion is second to adjourn. Any other discussion? See now, all is a favor.